Thank you. First order of business is to approve the agenda. I have one addition we would like to make. That is on the regular agenda. Item 5A will be the consideration of a flood emergency declaration. Mrs. Fisk and Pierre Freeman will be presenting that one. 5A, regular agenda, flood emergency declaration. Are there any additions, other additions to the agenda?
I would make a motion to approve with your addition.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson's second. It's been moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item C, approval of the minutes of October 7th, 2019. There are pages two through four. They have been distributed and they are on the website, so.
I'll make a motion to approve here.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, been moved to approve the minutes of October 7th as distributed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the building permits report. It has been distributed. It is in your packet.
Mr. Olson moves to approve the building permit activity report as distributed.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Jurdavich, seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is consent agenda. We have items A through F. Item A is the bills. They have been, they are in your packet, pages five through 14. A financial statement for nine months ending September 30th. The gaming site authorizations for four different items.
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Thorsted moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as distributed, items A through F. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the regular agenda. Item is the presentation of a check from Epic Companies, the city of West Fargo. Good evening. Welcome.
Hello. All right. Commissioners, Mackenzie Olson, representing Epic Companies. Today I want to present this check for $300,000 from investors of Pioneer Place in Cheyenne Plaza. This is to show our ongoing support to the downtown West Fargo redevelopment. I don't know if we can maybe get a photo or not.
Would you like to get a photo? We could come down there if you want us to.
All of us down there?
Yeah, absolutely. All of us.
Mayor, is there anyone else with a big check like that tonight who would like to come forward?
We'll certainly change the agenda for it.
Just a question, a comment. This is wonderful, I mean, but do we have any use for it or is there anything?
I need a new car. I don't know.
Not us. I mean, us.
I'll defer to Mrs. Fisk on that.
The funds that the check represents have already been spent by Epic in the creation of some of the amenities and things that we already have in the plaza and the plaza itself. So it's a post-check.
Okay, so it's going towards plaza.
Yep.
Excellent.
Just one comment. They have been a great partner with the city, though. I mean, we have done fantastic things downtown with them, so thank them so much. Thank you so much, Epic.
On behalf of the city commission, thank you to the Epic Companies and their investors. Moving on. Next order of business is item number one. A public hearing and approval of resolution approving a petition for vacation of Fourth Avenue West. Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Tonight is a public hearing for a housekeeping matter. As you're just speaking of the plaza, when the plaza was first created, we were in the, the developer and the city were in the process of acquiring what was off-the-wall advertising. That's the property, was the property to the north of the plaza. As a result, the decision was made to issue a license and close Fourth Avenue that stretched to build the plaza and wait until we had acquired the property to the north so we could determine what the final property lines would be and then go through the process of a formal public hearing for the vacation of that little narrow stretch of Fourth Avenue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Shockley. At this time, we will gavel out of the regular agenda and we will go into a public hearing. Is there anybody in the commission chambers that would like to speak to this issue? Petition of vacation of Fourth Avenue? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the issue of the vacation of Fourth Avenue? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the vacation of Fourth Avenue? Hearing and seeing none, a public hearing is closed. Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. We would then need a motion, a second, and a vote on the resolution approving the petition for vacation of that portion of Fourth Avenue West.
Yes, sir. Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve the petition for vacation?
Commissioner Thorsted moves to approve the resolution approving the petition for vacation. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavich, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution of vacation of Fourth Avenue West. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Item number two, Emerald Ash Bore presentation. Mr. Zander. Good evening.
Thank you and good evening, city commissioners and president of the commission. I am Chad Zander, the program coordinator for the Public Works Department, and I have an informational item tonight on the Emerald Ash Bore plan that was recently approved in August by the Urban Forestry Committee. First, I'll talk a little bit about our current ordinance, the way that we sit right now. Our current ordinance, the city owns and manages the boulevard trees, however, the residents are responsible for the maintenance on them. So that includes removal, pruning, planting, and replacement. By the ordinance, the nuisances are required to be removed by the resident. That includes on their private property and those boulevard trees. If there's a boulevard tree that has Dutch elm disease, that resident is responsible for the removal of it. Residents are also responsible by ordinance for pruning eight feet above the sidewalk and 14 feet above the street. So that's currently where we sit under the current ordinance. So our forestry department currently has been trying to basically fill in the gaps or focus heavily on planting ever since we knew that Emerald Ash Bore was going to become an issue. Our heavily, our most heavily planted areas are in those that contain the most ash. So right now, for the past five years, our focus has been filling in those gaps to get new growth going where those ash will eventually get removed. Some of the pruning that we currently do is primarily for safety hazards. Any public safety hazard, any type of a broken branch that could fall on the streets or sidewalk, we'll take care of those. Obviously, any storm damage on those emergency routes, any public safety information, we'll take care of. Also, we do very limited pruning when we have damage to equipment. Those are really specific areas. If there's a tree that's causing damage to a bau or sanitation truck, we'll take care of those in-house currently and won't have the residents do it. The abatement for the nuisances is hired out. We currently don't have the staff or the ability to handle those abates. So getting into the Emerald Ash Bore itself, it was first discovered in Michigan, 2002. It came over from China unpacking crate materials. It has a 15-year death curve, so that means that once it's in your community, within 15 years, all of our ash will be deceased. The entire plan is in all of your packets. This is a real abbreviated version. If there is any more questions, please feel free to look in there or reach out to me. The life cycle of the Emerald Ash Bore is from beetle. The beetle obviously lays an egg. The egg turns into a boar, goes under the bark, and creates what's called a gallery in the tree. That gallery then kills that tree. In the next year, the beetle emerges out of a D-shaped hole. That's one of the signs we look for when looking for Emerald Ash Bore, is that D-shaped exit wound on trees. Those galleries ultimately kill the tree by preventing the flow of nutrients up to the top. The Forest Service estimates that in the state of North Dakota, 50% of the trees on the river corridors are ash. So this brings up a whole different set of challenges for our river corridor. However, most of that is along private property, but we will have to work with, obviously, southeast castes and residents on those river corridors once it is here. But for the main part, I want to talk about the boulevard trees. Right now, we have around 5,700 ash trees on the boulevard. They are on 2,900 different properties, and so by averaging that out, we come up with 2,900. So basically, $3,000 to $5,000 those residents will have to spend to remove those boulevard trees as they die. This is in addition to any costs that they are already accruing removing the trees on their private property or along that river corridor. So obviously, those trees would be declared nuisances and would be required to be removed by the city. Treatment. There is, there is opportunities for treatment on ash trees. It is a pesticide. It is costly and time-consuming. It's obviously not realistic to treat all the boulevard trees. The most common is the trunk injection with triage. That'll last up to two years. That's the longest pesticide cycle period. So other than that, the sprays and some of the other ones have to be done annually on that tree to keep it healthy. 100% of the ash trees will die without treatment. On the map here, you can kind of see where it spread from Michigan and across the country. You can currently see that it is in Winnipeg, Manitoba, Stock Center, Minnesota, and Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So it is all around us and basically on our doorstep. A lot of the Emerald Ash Bore gets brought into these areas through the transportation of firewood, and I believe that was the case in Stock Center and Sioux Falls. As you can see, there's been a lot of municipalities that have dealt with this before us. Anything on the east coast, they've all dealt with this. Over the course of dealing with this, they've come up with what's called the SLAM strategy. And SLAM just stands for slowing the ash mortality in the city. Basically, what you want to do under the SLAM strategy is you want to remove the top 10 to 20% of the lower-quality ash trees first and replace those to get new growth going. Ideally, that would be before Emerald Ash Bore would get here. And then treating the top 5% of the healthiest trees with a pesticide. So that would include those trunk injections on roughly, for our community, maybe 500 trees or so treating those. And then dealing with the rest of them as they die under Emerald Ash Bore. Luckily, we, most of our growth down south was after the Emerald Ash Bore was known about, so there is very limited ash down there. However, in the core part of town here, we have roughly 44% of the trees are ash on the boulevard. So when looking at the map, you can see the red dots are the ash trees. The white dots are everything else. So you can see the heavy, the heavy plantings of ash throughout the town. This is that death curve that I was talking about earlier. So what this shows is it does take a little bit, up to four or five years, for your trees to start to die. And then from years six through 12, you really get an increase. And the charts on the, on the right there kind of show the numbers of it. Years 10 and 11 would be our heaviest with potentially up to 1,300 boulevard trees dying in those years. If we would do the SLAM strategy and remove those roughly 2,000 trees from our current inventory, it becomes a little bit more manageable with around 850 dying in those peak years, so potentially 500 less dead trees in those years. One of the things that we would like to do under that strategy is the phasing of the removals. So we wouldn't want to go down the street and clear-cut the trees down. We would go and selectively remove the lower-quality ash and replace those first, and then the next year, we would come back and do it again with next ones and so forth until we get diversified the street, basically, that it's not all ash. Ultimately, we want to end up with a diversified urban forest. That is the healthiest type of urban forest. Our current planting plans already do this. We mix in a huge amount of varieties of trees. As you can see on one of the examples here, our First Avenue planting, we had over seven species in those couple blocks there, so. And with that, I come to the Urban Forestry Committee. The Urban Forestry Committee is the advisory committee to the city commission on urban forestry issues. It is their recommendation that the city of West Fargo starts to look at the process of taking over maintenance of the city boulevard trees. A lot of this is to help those residents with the cost. They certainly understand the burden that it would be along those residents also dealing with their own private trees. Their recommended option would be a forestry fee on the utility bill. This would allow a full department to be funded and handle damage done by the Emerald Ash Bore. The Urban Forestry Committee's recommendation was based off the Emerald Ash Bore plan. However, I, we do have some in-house staff observations as well that I would like to note. The first of those being public safety. When we do send out nuisance letters, some of the residents will hire tree contractors and get them taken care of that way. Other ones choose to do it themselves. We do have residents that are not trained in traffic control, proper pruning techniques that do their own maintenance on those trees. We have instances of branches dropped on sidewalks, trees dropped in streets, stumps knocked round out and replacements not put back. We also see on the south part of town, a lot of improper planting techniques. The depth, the size of the hole, mistaking, and obviously not enough watering. We are seeing quite a few deceased trees as well, so. With that, I open it up. If there's any questions?
Any questions, Mrs. Zander? Mr. Thorsted?
Chad, does this include all types of ash trees? Are there certain ash trees that are okay that these bores don't like and others they enjoy or?
We have two that we grow here, black ash and green ash, and both of those are affected.
Okay, but how like a mountain ash or?
There's white ash as well, I believe. Mountain ash are not a true ash. They will be fine. There's also a white fringe tree, it's called, that they affect as well, but we don't have any of those.
Okay, so some, some ash trees would probably be okay then, even though it may not be a true ash tree, I guess it's?
Yeah, yeah. Mountain ash or not.
But is there any special disposal requirements on that? See if the resident wants to take their own tree out? Can they just, they throw it just on the curb or do you have a special way to get rid of it?
Yeah, we're going to have a huge amount of debris removal issues once this comes into town. Obviously, everything on the private property side will need to be chipped over the course of the winter before the bugs can emerge the next year. That does give us a little bit of leeway over the winter to get all that handled properly chipped.
And then the last question, I know your request is that the city would take this over through some kind of a fee, which seems like a reasonable request. But do the residents have a resource they can go to the check? You have that nice map that you showed, so that they know what they've got and maybe at the minimum be on the, you know, have a heads-up as to potential problems down the road and, you know, maybe they're having a remodeling project or re-landscaping or something and maybe it would make sense for them to replace some of those proactively instead of reactively.
Currently, it's not available to the public. We could work with our GIS department and get it added on our product.
I think we'd be nice to have a link on the website anyway to say, you know, we've identified these trees so they at least know they've got one.
Yeah, correct. Some properties do have six or seven, other properties have one for the purposes of this plan. We average that out. Roughly those 5,700 trees over 2,900 properties was 1.92 trees per property. That's where we came up with those costs, but it could be way above that or a little bit below it, I mean, on the number of trees.
Yeah, I guess the last question, I'm hugging all the questions, is why would you, it says that insecticide or whatever works for two years and you have to, is there a reason you'd want to keep those ash trees around because it sounds like it'd be something you'd have to do in perpetuity?
Sure. Into the plan, I get into it a little bit. The largest, most healthy ash trees provide the most benefit to the city. Keeping those around over the course while we're dealing with this, we would get the most benefits out of those trees, including shading, stuff like that, stormwater absorption and that kind of stuff.
Okay. So at some point down the road, they'd probably be replaced or something, but you just want to maintain them for a while?
Eventually, eventually, they would get replaced to other stuff with dealt with first.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
Chad, let's talk a little bit about a timeframe. What, when are we expecting this to come? I know we talked about this before, through the commission, many years ago, Mike, we talked about this. And back then, it was still in Stock Center?
Twin Cities. Stock Center was new just this year. Yep, it made that jump just this year.
Okay, what's been, St. Cloud I'm thinking of then?
No, it was Rochester and the Twin Cities prior to this.
So it's gone and, when was that? Just this year? So it's gone for?
Yeah, it just jumped to Stock Center this year.
Do you recall when we talked about it last? What year that would have been? I don't even have an idea, Mike, if you do, but it's been a lot of years. My point is, is like, you know, when can we expect this to come? I mean, I guess there's no guarantee. Hopefully, never.
No, it is up in the air through that, the transportation of firewood. It could be here tomorrow, hopefully not.
But there must be some type of, there must be some type of past history that Minnesota had when it came from wherever, Wisconsin, wherever it came from then. There must be some type of a, of a history of how long it takes to get from, you know, how many miles, whatever. I guess what I'm asking is when, when should we anticipate this actually hitting the Fargo-Moorhead area? I mean, do we have any clue at all? Do any other oysters know or?
We would hope a couple of years. Maybe before then. There is, there are certain professionals that believe it is already here since we don't see those dead trees till years four or five, but again, that is up in the air. All it would take is an infested load of firewood to be transported from any one of the infected communities here, and it would be an inertic, so.
Hopefully, we're taking our wood to Minnesota and we'll be okay, but, again, I'm just wondering, you know, if we, it'd be nice to know history when we last talked about it and how far it got from the Twin Cities to Stock Center, how many years it took.
That was a jump from the cities to Stock Center. It did not go to every place in between. It jumped from the Twin Cities to Stock Center.
And how long did that take? That's what my question.
The cities was at least five years ago. So about that before that jump to Stock Center this year.
Mr. Zander, as part of your plan, will you be having public information meetings throughout the community as we get closer to this?
Yes, absolutely. We would, we would work closely with, with John on figuring out the ordinance and Jim on the finances to see if that option's viable, if there's other funding sources that we could potentially use in combination with the utility bill. All of that is still up in the air depending on, on your decisions, so.
I think that a methodology of really showing the public what an ash tree leaf looks like or branches and things like that is going to be very important because, you know, I don't know what's along the river in my lot.
Agreed. We do a couple of fact sheets each year and especially when Emerald Ash Bore is here, those fact sheets will focus just on that.
Oh, we appreciate that you're out front of this. Thank you. Anyone else? Questions from Mr. Zander? Thank you for the information. The next order of business is item number three. The Verity Homes request for authorization to permit and begin construction. Mr. Rory Anderson, they're on pages 54 and 58 in your packet. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner President and commissioners, staff. We are requesting for authorization to commence with permitting and construction of Twin Homes lots one and two, 13 and 14, while the city infrastructure is being put in on the Magnum Edition area. They will be, we've already gotten approval from them to do so, and we did work with city staff in order to come up with a hold harmless agreement in event that something were to happen. It would be us that would be responsible for taking care of any items for that. The reason for doing so is obviously with the weather that we're currently seeing on here. Time is of the essence in order for us to get the foundations in place. Our plan of action for doing so is going to get to backfill on these undergrounds and backfill, and then we will stop construction until the city services have gotten to that point where they catch up and surpass where we're going to be starting construction at.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Anderson? Any questions of planning and zoning, engineering?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Simmons?
That's okay. Tim, could you come up, please? Thank you. I know in the past, we have given considerations to types of this, but I don't recall us going this far where nothing is there at all. Do you have any history of that or knowledge, or maybe even John would remember, recall back?
Personally, I don't. I think the uniqueness of this site is that they had previously done the roads within here privately, and now it's a city project. And so, you know, being a city project, contractor hasn't started yet really much in here, so I would defer to Dustin on some of those questions. I think for us, the hold harmless agreement, the authorization is not something staff feels comfortable with, being any issues, and I talked to Jake quite a bit about this, if there's any issues with construction of the site, things like that, keeping the property dry, clean throughout the winter after all this is happening, that's sort of a difficulty for us. We can probably handle it, but we want to make sure that that authorization's given by the commission and not by staff. I defer to project questions to our city engineer.
Okay.
Anything to add, Dustin?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and members of the commission. To answer your first question, Commissioner Simmons, we have authorized building permits ahead of the underground end or city infrastructure, but typically only on commercial projects. So for example, on Ninth and Main Avenue right now, there is a site that started there without any infrastructure. The difference is space. You know, on a commercial project, there's a lot of room to work with, whereas in this situation, we're going to have these foundations being put in relatively close to where the city utilities are going to be put in underground. So that is the difference, but again, as Tim mentioned, you know, that's where we felt that the hold harmless agreement needs to be put in place. We required Verity Homes to work with our underground contractor, KPH. So between KPH agreeing to the situation and, and John getting this hold harmless agreement put in place, we felt that it was at least at a point where we could present this to the commission or that they could present this to the commission, so. And at this point, the city's project is not intended to actually start because of the weather. They're, they're just holding off and they're going to start next spring. So when, when our contractor comes out to install the So when, when our contractor comes out to install the sewer and water main lines, these foundations will be in place.
Mr. Scott? Any other questions?
John, do you have anything to add to that?
The whole harmless agreement you see in the packet was the first draft. I made some revisions to it requiring the developer to provide insurance and the city isn't additionally insured. They have agreed to those requirements. So from a legal department standpoint, we're okay with it, but still looking for a commission approval if, if you're okay as a commission authorizing it to proceed.
So speaking of John, within that modified or updated demonification and whole harmless, does it also include if contractor, I think it's KPH, has additional costs that they're not gonna come back to the city for? Any change orders or anything? The Verity would be responsible for that? If in some way they got in their way and they had to, it took them longer or whatever, took additional materials? So that's covered as well? Because I, I don't think it's specifically, at least in the copy we got, was covering that.
Yeah, it's not in the copy that you got, but we did include in the updated draft a requirement that they carry builder's all risk insurance, which is, so if there's an issue that costs KPH more and the city is listed as an additionally insured under that policy, then we would be able to make a claim under the policy. So I feel comfortable that we're protected if there is an issue. But once again, it's a commission decision if you wanna allow it to go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, our building administrator, Jay Sandvik, had some comments. If I could ask him to maybe make sure that Verity could address those too.
Absolutely, please.
Welcome, Mr. Sandvik.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our biggest issue with this, one, we have no service going in to get trucks in there. It's a dirt field for the most part. And with their extremely wet conditions, what we have going in, even if the foundation's there, there's gonna be frost that's gonna form underneath those footings, whether it be the slab or not. And once that starts, which we got proposed freezing temperatures in the evening here next week, all the way through Halloween and whatever's gonna happen after that isn't probably gonna be good. But for us to make sure it's a quality one, not saying that they don't feel great, but that frost and the access to it is just not there. There's no power that they can get there to it. And the Cass County will not put the power in until once it freezes. And that's coming up here, probably by the end of November, that'll be done. If it hasn't been, depending on weather. But that's, we've got no access to get our guys in there. Say if someone gets hurt, there's no access for emergency response as well. It's just kinda out there and open. And that's my biggest concern with the structure. Because if it goes in, it's gonna have to be capped and heated and protected for the duration of the winter. And that's quite an expense.
And I would assume that would mean generators because there's no power, right?
Correct.
All.
Generators or propane heat, but you're still gonna need something there. So I mean, there's a lot of things to consider, but we have, that's our biggest issue when we start with this cold weather, with the soil. It's just not, and you can't backfill with frozen material on it. It just isn't gonna work. Not to say that there isn't options, but that's our concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any questions? Mr. Anderson, please.
A little bit to, the concerns being brought up here, we completely understand the concerns. One thing is, I was not made aware until just this evening now that there wasn't gonna be any work continuing up in, at this point until, until the springtime. With that being said, we have vast experience between both areas, this area and in Bismarck, North Dakota, where we started from, building without any infrastructure in place. Most recently here in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, in Lakewood Ninth Edition, which we did the developing for, but did not have city services in for completion. Now, we did, are able to run ground boilers in order to get the soil temperature to where it needs to be in order for footings, stem walls. There is heated backfill material if we need to do that coming in. So we can take the proper measures in order to continue construction, get the structure put in place. We tell the, the city services are actually put like at that time in the springtime.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Anderson? It's your pleasure, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I guess.
Commissioners?
I'm concerned with it, quite honestly. I'm a little concerned with the contract. I'm a little concerned with KPH. I'm a little concerned with everything. So I don't want to, I guess, to me, if we, if we jump into this, there's no turning back and what kind of troubles are we gonna have in the spring?
One, one question I should have asked when Mr. Anderson is here. Why, why, what's the necessity for getting this in now? What, are these pound homes sold or is it just in, keeping your staff busy over the winter?
So currently, out of the four Twin Homes that would be built, three out of the four are sold. We did have plans on putting in the other five buildings, or excuse me, eight buildings, all at one time here this, this winter. Obviously, with changing of the plat, we saw the timelines shift and change, you know, accordingly. So originally, we had eight more buildings, sixteen units total that would have also been started. Backed off of those, we did lose some, some interest in some of the other buildings because we weren't able to start all tho, all those buildings. So we're kinda grasping a little bit as far as, you know, holding on to the ones that we do still have sold on here. From our standpoint, part of the, the addition there is a new product, which is a three-bed, two-bath, lab-on-grade product, which we feel will have good sales velocity for us. We'd like to have that up in place and as a show home here prior to the start of the two thousand twenty selling season. So there is a business model that comes into play on this, obviously. We wanna make sure that these things are built right. We don't plan on coming doing this just haphazardly and then having issues with it. But again, I'll revert back to, we've been in business for eighteen years. We do know what we're doing. We have that experience in the same situation. I can understand the concerns, truly can. But at the end of the day, this is construction. We do know what we're doing. And we do believe that we are taking the right steps and the right measures in order to protect the, the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anyone else? Any questions for him?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What is your pleasure, Commissioner?
You need a motion either way?
Mm-hmm. Yes, please.
Unfortunately, sir, I think I would make the motion to deny this request right now just because of our staff are admitting that they're not even comfortable with this. So that worries me.
Commissioner Simmons moves. Is there a second?
A second. I, occur with, Mr. Simmons, I don't see a necessity again, this in, whether they're sold or not, that KPH is not gonna complete their work until next year anyway. It's not a small.
Nobody can move in until their homes are in anyway. You're not gonna get a lot of occupants.
Services and water and all that before you can sell the property anyways. I'll second.
Commissioner Thorsted seconds. Been moved and seconded to deny the request for authorization to permit and begin construction for Verity Homes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion to deny, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The permit to begin construction is denied. Next order of business is item number four, site plan review for Eagle Run Plaza Ninth Edition. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Honor. I'm just gonna pull this up. If you recall, we have done a couple of these. There's a provision in the ordinance of the corridor overlay district that requires site plan review by Planning Commission and City Commission prior to authorizing building permits. And this is a property that is just south of Thirty Second and west of Cheyenne Street where this applies to. The property here is proposed to be a commercial property, meets all the requirements that would have been in place for this district. The property's actually being replatted for more commercial office in this area. The comp plan envisions this area developing mostly mixed use. I think the emphasis toward commercial is a, is a consistent message throughout the comp plan that would support approving this permit. You've had, you have the site plan and elevations in your packet. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Commissioners?
Should note, excuse me, Mr. President, that after our October eighth meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of this as well.
And this meets approval with the percentage of building materials and the like and all those reviews, Mr. Solberg?
Yes, yes. And our condition that we add on there is just basically ensuring that building civil, everything can be met still so that they have to ensure that they get a full permit after this.
I think it looks good and I think it's congruent with the area and it, it's a service to all the people that live in that area. And yet it is a commercial operation. And that was a few years back, Mr. Simmons recall, we had to reject housing requests in that area. And I guess some folks didn't think they'd ever seen a commercial here, but I think this is a great commercial use for that.
It's very nice.
Area.
You held strong on not letting it develop to residential and it's now seen its potential, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve it. The one condition, Mayor, that's what you want?
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons moves. Commissioner Jervik seconds to approve the site plan review for Eagle Run Plaza Ninth Edition with the conditions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number five, site plan review for the twenty-two oh five Cheyenne Street. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Another similar instance, this one actually is within both the corridor overlay district south of Cheyenne Street and, excuse me, south of the interstate along Cheyenne Street and the interstate corridor overlay, which both require that same review and approval. Very small addition to All Seasons Motorsports. They're just adding this small piece to the end on what is submitted to you. It does not show that that siding is of the same type of the existing siding. However, I spoke with the owner and it is. We'll verify that at time of building permit. That was the only condition the Planning Commission added, with exception to the, the other condition that's along with all these others that require building civil and zoning issues are met at the time of building permit. That was also done at the October eight nineteen, our two thousand nineteen meeting. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Questions for Mr. Solberg? It's your pleasure, Commissioners.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Jervik moves to approve the review of the twenty-two oh five Cheyenne Street Edition. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds, been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Is that with the two conditions?
With the conditions. Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. With the conditions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item five A will be the flood emergency declaration. I'll call on Mrs. Fisk and Mr. Freeman, please.
I will go over a few talking point, no. Good evening, Commissioners, sorry. This is very rude. I will go over a few talking points that have been pulled together and then I will let you ask questions of Pierre and myself. And then we do have the declaration here that Pierre has offered to read.
I know that you don't.
And so after I've done with my points and your questions, we can have him read the declaration and we will see if you want to approve it. Today, the state of North Dakota and Cass County issued an emergency declaration due to the heavy rainfall and historic October blizzard. These disaster declarations allow requests for the federal assistance as these jurisdictions deal with the weather impacts on the agriculture, industry and infrastructure. The city of West Fargo is not expected to see Cheyenne River flooding this fall due to the precipitation. However, the city has also issued an emergency declaration or is requesting an emergency declaration to, one, show solidarity with Cass County and two, to recognize the long-term impacts of this precipitation that they will have and possible flooding that may occur during snow melt in the spring. This act is taken out of an abundance of caution for our community, excuse me. City of West Fargo staff and officials have begun working on spring snow melt plans now and to, in order to be able to provide the best response come this spring. Anyone with property adjacent to the Cheyenne River south of I ninety-four is asked to please continue to monitor their properties and riverbanks and notify the Public Works Department at four-three-three fifty-four hundred immediately if they see any changes, issues or potential concerns. And these are the reasons why we feel it is important and imperative to, to join in on the emergency declaration. Pierre will now read.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, Commissioners and President Dardis. The emergency declaration will state, whereas the city of West Fargo has been severely impacted by the significant late summer and fall rainfall and historic October blizzard event throughout the city of West Fargo, and whereas the city, whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration NOAA Climate Prediction Center is predicting higher than average precipitation from December twenty nineteen through February twenty twenty, creating the potential for even greater flood concerns going into the spring of twenty twenty. And whereas the impact of this incident threatens the health, well-being and public safety of the residents of the city of West Fargo, and whereas the emergency disaster damages have, have exceeded or expected to exceed local capabilities or available city resources to adequately respond and recover, now therefore be resolved that the city commissioner of West Fargo, Cass County, North Dakota, declares the disaster emergency currently exists in the city of West Fargo, North Dakota.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Comments, questions, Commissioners?
Only comment I'll have is if you've driven by the diversion lately and that water is really high, so we're handling a fair amount. We're fortunate, West Fargo, we have the diversion and it works as well as it does. But I would imagine the water levels could be higher for a while because there's a lot of water in that Devil's Lake basin that feeds the Cheyenne. So I certainly would support, you know, especially our rural friends and farmers around here. They're really having a, a challenge, you know, with all the water they have to deal with and trying to get their crops into the bins. So I think it'd be good for us to support.
Commissioner Olson and myself, Mrs. Fisk, Mr. Freeman and other key staff were all at the press conference this morning, conducted by the governor and the agriculture commissioner along with General Dorman from the National Guard. And they certainly impressed upon us that these, these conditions are real. And if we continue to get moisture, that there's gonna be substantial rural flooding in northwest of us. And, and visiting with our staff this morning, they referred to it that it's, we're in the middle of October and we're in full flood, spring flood preparation for what they're doing with regard to culverts, with regard to how the diversion is in full operation, as you said, Commissioner Thorsted. So I think it's appropriate that we follow in the same venue and go with this declaration. So I would urge the commission's support on this. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Olson moves. Is there a second, please? Commissioner Jervik seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the flood emergency declaration for the city of West Fargo on this date. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Next order of business is our construction updates. Mr. Scott? Apologizing for preempting you. We're all dying to hear your report.
Absolutely. Exciting. Liberal leader. Well, thank you, Commissioner President, the members of the commission. Some of it. Well, I think on the heels of our last action item there, I'd like to start off our construction conversation with just an update on the weather and the impacts it's had internally, not only with our construction projects, which comes without saying, but some of the other things not only with our construction projects, which comes without saying, but, uh, some of the other things that we've been, uh, stressed with in the last month has been, you know, influx of drainage issues and concerns from our residents and our public. You know, we are certainly experiencing a lot more water than we have in the past, um, especially for this time of year and, and some, uh, you know, drainage concerns, whether it's in the backyards or in, in the ditches in our rural neighborhoods. Uh, there has certainly just been an influx of, um, of need and, and concerns brought forward from our, our residents with how to handle these drainage issues. So we're trying as best we can to, to help where we, where we can help. You know, a lot of that is private property and, and, and private issues to deal with, but of course we're a good resource to help resolve those. Um, and then, you know, some of the, uh, back to the construction side, uh, as well as our private construction aspect, you know, our residential and commercial projects that are going on, really been a tough fall in terms of keeping things clean. Uh, our stormwater management, um, permit, if you will, is, uh, basically where we try to contain each site, not allow mud onto the streets, uh, so on and so forth. And there's just been an influx of, of projects where, uh, we, they just can't keep up with that and, and we unfortunately don't have, uh, the right staff to, to really stay up and enforce, uh, these policies and, and these permits. So, uh, we have been really, uh, again, trying to work with contractors as we can, um, but complaints still kind of come faster than, than we can help resolve the issues that pop up. So again, just all contributing to the anomaly of, of weather that we have this year. So with that, I will get into the project specific stuff. Uh, Cheyenne Street, again, you know, I, I, the, the forum has an article in today's paper, uh, that, that I think the public is pretty well aware of where we're at with Cheyenne Street, but, uh, segments, uh, two and the interchange, the, uh, you know, the DOT has opened up the majority of the interchange, um, and the majority of segment two is complete. There's still some need for closures as they work on the medians and they continue to work on things like getting the, the bike path network, uh, complete. I know underneath the interchange, there's still a, a stretch there that needs to get finished up. And then as weather allows, you know, that's where the, uh, the boulevards will get dressed up, the seating. And then there's still pavement work to do, you know, the, the joint sealing and, and, um, continuing the, uh, call it the, the punch list items. So as weather allows, we'll get as much done as we can this year. Um, I foresee some of this stuff spilling into 2020. Uh, for segment three, uh, they are getting closer. Um, again, weather's not helping, but we're hoping by November first, this, uh, segment three from, you know, south of 32nd Avenue is going to open up. Uh, right now they're continuing to work on, uh, the medians, the lighting systems, and again, uh, sidewalks and, and bike paths. As weather allows, we'll try to get as much done in the boulevards, but again, like segment two, I think some of this work will end up being pushed to 2020. Haven't touched on this one yet, um, but thought it'd be good to throw a picture of, of, uh, the city's parking garage going in at the lights at 32nd. So, uh, if you haven't been down there, certainly it's a, it's a bit of a, a war zone down there, but, um, a lot of good progress being made in, in that entire project, the two buildings that are underway and, and this particular parking garage. Uh, it's great to see progress here. Um, again, all of this development though is, is really putting a, a struggle with things like stormwater management. So some of this activity in this particular area, um, is causing some, some distress with our Cheyenne Street project in terms of getting the street profiled. You know, where we do our final testing to see how the rideability is of the street and the DOT needs to sign off on that kind of stuff. We can't perform these tests when there's mud on the streets. So not only are we dealing with standing water issues, but, you know, just keeping, uh, good, clean construction practices is, is very taxing when, when we're getting this much weather or this much water. And as I said, you know, our other projects, they're certainly delayed. Um, some of these projects are certainly going to have to be, uh, pushed into 2020. Uh, again, we'll continue to work with contractors on getting the majority of the work done. That is really imperative this year. Um, but we do foresee a good chunk of work getting pushed into 2020. Um, with that might come some additional costs and/or time extensions on contracts. Our core area study, it's been a, a few weeks since we've talked about this. The, uh, consultant has submitted a, a draft document and as of Thursday last week, we got a revised priority project list where we can now sit and really understand what, what the projects are. Um, at this point, we still need to go through and ask staff review this draft document and get it into its final stage. And then from there, uh, we are working with, you know, more engineering is helping us with integrating this, uh, this work with our overall CIP. So the core area infrastructure study, the list of 15 to 20 projects in there will be implemented into our overall CIP so that we can, as a whole, prioritize and budget and plan accordingly. Um, we do have a significant amount of workload to prepare for, for future years. Once we start getting to a point where we're really comfortable with our projects and, and the, uh, the budget, construction costs, uh, that's where we need to start engaging our city commission then on, on how we're going to set up our, our funding options and/or policies. So we still have a lot of work, I think, in that arena to, to get this all nailed down, uh, before we really want to start engaging the public and, and, and going that route. So in the next couple of months, I, I think we'll be at that stage and, and hopefully, uh, into the winter months, we'll be at a point where we can start making some decisions on, on financing and, um, shortly after, then of course engage our public. And last, I want to, kind of along the same topic, the legacy fund. Uh, the League of Cities has a, a meeting with the, the city administrators, uh, get together, um, their meeting this Thursday, and they had reached out asking the cities to provide, uh, a list over the next five bienniums, uh, basically getting us through the end of 31, uh, of projects that might want to use, uh, legacy funds. So what we did is, and this is relatively rough, uh, draft here, but, um, basically working with this, the, the core area plan and our current CIP, taking those projects and, and implementing it into their, uh, spreadsheet here, paints a picture over the next 10 years and beyond. Um, you know, so the, the last column there is for 2031 and beyond. But it paints a picture of, we've, uh, forecasting right about $200 million worth of improvements to be made. And I would say that's probably over the course of the next 20 years. Uh, 140 of, of that, 140 million dollars within the next 10 years. So again, it's a, it's a rough estimate. It's a, you know, brief stroke of a paintbrush, but gives an idea of, of how much, uh, we still are looking, uh, forward to completing in the next 10, 20 years. So I just thought it's something interesting to share, uh, with the commission. Um, again, I, at this point, the League of Cities is just, they're, they're looking to the communities so they can start gauging what kind of, uh, needs are out statewide and, and just wanted to share with what we've submitted as, as West Fargo's, um, needs. So with that, I will gladly answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Commissioners?
I have one question for you.
Mr. Olson.
On the segment between 32nd and 40th on Cheyenne Street, is there any possibility of allowing traffic to utilize one lane north and south while they're still working on the medians like they did on the segments north of there? Or is it too dangerous to, to do that at this point?
Yeah, at this point, whether or not it would be possible, it's in the contract to allow them to keep it closed. Um, and they will cite that it's a safety issue. It's a efficiency issue. And so, uh, the conversations we've had in recent weeks is that the contractor still have the opinion they're going to keep things closed down so they can get the work done. Uh, they fear that if they open it up, similar to what we did, uh, earlier this spring to get 40th Avenue partially open, that they will just lose time. And with the weather conditions, they don't want to compromise time to get the job done. So no, at this point, we're going to let them keep it fully closed until, hopefully, again, by November first, we can open that up.
Additional questions from Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The next order of business is the city administrator's report. Mrs. Fisk?
Good evening again, Commission President and Commissioners. Um, first item, um, one of our developers, John Eunice, had just spoke with Tim briefly and wanted to know if he could be added to the agenda. Um, he wanted to get authorization to begin construction on part of the Wilds 11th. It's a portion that I can't describe it perfectly. Dustin could give you more information, but it is, it has the majority of the work all done. There's just some lines to, there's just some wire to pull through and a few other things. Um, so he just wanted to talk with you about that if possible? Or if you wanted to wait to next mission, it's totally up to you.
No, if they're here, we'll, we'll respect that.
Okay.
Don't you agree? Just to find out about it, if nothing else, even if we don't take action?
I'm okay to listen, I guess, but I think it should have been on the agenda.
Go ahead.
Um, I was not made aware, staff was not made aware until now that he wanted to be on the agenda, but I know we've, staff have been discussing the issue. So.
Do you have anything else for your reports?
Yes, I do.
I'll call for that non-agenda items.
Yes. Okay. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to kind of, um, throw at you, just to kind of give you a great idea. The public works staff, um, and the other staff within the city, I just wanted to tell you what a fantastic job they've been doing. In the absence of some of our essential directors and staff, everyone has pulled together really well and from the top down, bottom up, and have been working for great ways to become more efficient and find ways to leverage what we do have for talent in the city and keep us moving forward in really great ways as we move forward. Um, so I just wanted you to know that everyone has really jumped on board and do like we always do. We're, we work as a team, but they've been doing really a fantastic job and I'm very impressed and proud of the work that they've been doing. Um, with that in mind, the hiring processes are proceeding. Um, all, all the, the Director of Public Works and the Director of Exempt Development are both out there with pending closing dates coming up. Um, so we will keep you posted when we get to a closer passage on that. As you saw on the map I sent out, our staff has been moving around a lot, trying to make room for everything that we have. And, and that's another place where I can say everybody has just pitched in together and they've made this move and this growth that we're having as minimal of cost as possible. We're looking at a cost that the majority of the cost of the items are for desks or things like that that we will use, whether we're here or at another location in the next few years going on. So they're making really strategic, intelligent moves and trying to make it flow better for the public. Um, if you'll notice, and we're going to be putting out, um, some information as we go forward so that the public knows what's going on. But, um, as of today, I know our utility billing receptionist or staff person and the accounts receivable staff person moved up where the clerk of court was sitting. And clerk of court has moved on to where utility billing was. Our hope is that we can get the flow going down so that we can close off that other entrance eventually and just have people coming in these main doors. And then they can be brought down, have people come up from the other departments that are farther down the hall to greet them and meet them rather than make them all, all the way down there. So we're working on a lot of efficiencies and if you see anything, you have a suggestion, please feel free. We're open to any suggestions, but, um, I really have to hand it to the core group of staff that they've all just kind of buckled in and everyone's been making an effort to make this as smooth as possible. So, and I have to say, I'm back in the office. I started and so I'm happy. At least I have a spot. Larry asked if he could work out of his car. We've moved him so many times. And John's office is still on my desk in my other office, so it's all good. Um, other than that, the only thing that I was going to mention to you was the city administrator's meeting that we'll be having in Valley City on the 24th. Um, you'll be talking about the legacy funds and the needs and uses that all the different communities have. Um, Representative Warner will be there. Um, he's very curious and that's who Dustin was kind enough to he, to take his weekend time and prepare that report so that we had information to be sent to them so they could compile that. So I appreciate that and, um, I'm looking forward to that meeting to see what comes up from that. So, do you have any questions for me?
So at that meeting, are you, are, are, is your hope that there might be grants or allocations of some funds towards these projects? Or are they also contemplating perhaps a loan program, a low-interest loan program, so we don't have to bond out of state and we could bond in-state and, you know, drive the benefits here?
I believe, and Bernie would probably know more than I do, but I believe that they're pulling all those different options together and Senator Warner is working really hard so that he can have some legislation ready for the next session to utilize those legacy funds, low-interest loans, those types of things. Um, Bernie, you might know more, talking with the people that you're, you visit with.
The Legislative Council is also having meetings across the state. November 12th and 13th will be at NDSU at the McGovern Center. That's the Alumni Center. That'll be the first one. That's actually where all the committee members, House and Senate, will be, uh, in attendance. And what they're going to be doing is trying to get public input as to, uh, the legacy fund discussion. Now, at the present time, the legislature has authorization that they can, uh, you know, they can use the interest earnings, but they cannot touch the principal because of the way that the original was written. So that discussion is taking place also as to whether or not long-term, uh, bonding, uh, uh, low-interest loans, which would be a revolving loan. So any payments that somebody that was granted one would go back into the money pool and the like. So there's a, a very good high possibility of a very low-interest revolving fund loan administered by the Bank of North Dakota. That's a real possibility. Uh, I've had some number of discussions with Senator Wardner and, and some of those members on that, uh, and, uh, it's all very positive. They're, they're trying to do the same type of public engagement and legislative engagement that they did for the Prairie Dog Bill. And that was obviously very successful. They only lost five votes in the Senate and 15 votes in the House. So that was a, a good way of, of engaging the public and, uh, the legislature. So that's going to be ongoing. And, uh, yeah, grants, possibility. The, the, the bulk of the discussion is going to be whether or not there's, um, uh, the principal gets touched and if at what level, you know, whether it's a 10% level of that, because at the present time, uh, they continue to say $6 billion, but if we had Mr. Larson do the accounting work on that, it would be $8 billion that's available. Uh, so they are, they are kind of very conservative of how they pull the number out of their sky. Uh, but, uh, it's between six and eight billion dollars that's available. And there'll be anywhere from four to 600 million dollars available in interest that the legislature will be able to do with that. Well, all very positive, uh, but the discussions are ongoing and, uh, like I said, November 12th is, 13th, the 12th is an evening meeting. The 13th is a morning meeting. Correct?
I think so. I have it on my calendar, but I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
But that is at the McGovern Center at NDSU, the Alumni Center.
Um, I thought of one other thing. Um, I just wanted to touch base with you. We pulled the agenda item off discussing building inspections and, um, bringing that on as a city function and some other items that have come up. And I just want to let you know that I am going to be sending out some more information to you. I'll be meeting with, uh, Commissioner, um, Commissioner Simmons and Commission President Dardis. And if you have questions or concerns over any of the information I've already sent you, just let me know. Um, but I just want to clarify more and I appreciate being asked to just clarify a little better. Uh, also as a heads up, when we started getting into some of the things that are going on with, um, stormwater or, you know, regulations and things and lack of stormwater regulation and some of the other things that we've had coming up, staff has been really kind of pull it, try to pull it all together and figure out how we're going to handle all these things that need to be handled in a proper way and at what level of service you guys will want it to be at. And just know that we'll be keeping you posted and coming forward with ideas and thoughts and suggestions to, um, to keep you posted and just say how, what do you want us to do? Where do you want us to be? Because we need your direction, what level of service you want for the people and what you feel is appropriate for the people and the communities. So don't be afraid to give me a call and tell me a thing or ask me a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. In reference to Mrs. Fisk's comment about Commissioner Simmons and myself, uh, that's, the reason for that is we share the administrative portfolio. So that's, um, that'd be why she'd be visiting with us rather than all Commissioners. So, uh, just for the public information. Is there any correspondence, Mrs. Fisk, that, uh, we need to know about?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Uh, with regard to the non-agenda item that, uh, Mrs. Fisk brought up, um, we can have a discussion about that right now. If, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and your address. This is, uh, a little out, little out of protocol, but we're going to respect the fact that you're here. So.
This is a little out, little out of protocol, but we're going to respect the fact that you're here, so.
Yeah, I apologize. My name's John Eunice with Eagle Ridge Development and we are developing the Wilds south of 52nd Avenue. Appreciate the time and consideration. We've been, I, I think everybody's been dealing with the same weather-related issues all construction season long. If you guys remember about a year ago, we were in and started construction on the Wilds 11th on the south side of 52nd Avenue. Because of the weather delays, we're now sitting in mid-October, late October, and the project hasn't yet gotten to the completion. We're down to the final punch list items and there are only a few items actually remaining before the property actually gets turned over from the contractor in the city to us. And so what I'm, I'm here asking, we have four builders that are in for permit right now and I'm asking for the city commission to allow staff to potentially release permits on the south side of 52nd Avenue, on the north side of Wilds 11th. And we do have a correspondence between us and the city with the Contractor Dakota Underground and they're also agreeable to allowing builders getting in there and starting construction on the houses.
Commissioners, I just want to touch on the point of the city's project being nearly complete. I don't, I don't believe that's truly the, the cause for delaying issuing building permits out in this development. Historically, the, we permitted residential permits as soon as the streets are done and the streets have been done. I think the concern that Jay, and I imagine Jay can get up and talk if he's still here, but I think the concern that our, our building administrator has is, again, the, the site conditions. It's, it's wet, it's cold and kind of the same spiel that he gave during the Verity Homes agenda item would be somewhat applicable and I think that's why he's holding on, on issuing a building permit. There's just a discomfort for the site conditions, you know, once we have multiple contractors in there, they're going to make a mess of the streets, the boulevards, so on and so forth and understandably partly because of the weather. And then, you know, staff, we don't have any resources to really enforce and control our stormwater permit. So I think that's part of it and again, the other constructibility factors that Jay mentioned earlier. So I just wanted to make it known that it's not the lack of progress in our improvement project, it's our, our other concerns.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else from the city staff like to speak to this item? Mr. Sandvik, inspections.
Thank you again, and the biggest thing, like I said, like with Hadley Meadows, I mean, it's an investment in the city with it and I agree with what they're doing. It's just that we're at such a late stage with what they start and the cold weather concrete, the building, the heating, all that stuff is part of that issue. What if, my problem is, we've had it happen before where, say if a house is finished and they want to seal, right now, there is absolutely zero yard, no approach, sidewalks are an issue. But we all have to, at least we're going to have to deal with it or it's going to have to come to head at some point in time where that's going to be addressed. If that happens, and it's the same thing, we just got, it's just the wrong time of the year for this to go on, but there are ways.
Thank you, Mr. Sandvik. Commissioners, any questions?
I guess, I guess, Mayor, my, my biggest concern of all overall this is that we don't set a precedent here tonight and having someone come in at the last minute of our meeting, I appreciate they came and that's why we listened to them, I understand that, but by voting on something, we're setting precedent for every other, every other builder and developer to come in, walk in at the last minute, want us to approve their permit. And I, I don't think that is a wise way to go. I think we should at the very least wait two weeks till the next meeting, have our staff get their information and listen to them again, perhaps if we'd like to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Bullis, would you like to address the group?
Please do. Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, my name is Jim Bullis and again, I'm here at the Wilds on the same topic. And this is, I can assure you, there's been correspondence going back and forth with city staff for a couple of weeks and I, I think there's some reluctance to maybe make this decision, have there be any adverse consequences down the road, staff levels. And we're to the point where, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a rhythm to development. If we don't get parade homes in this fall, we're not going to sell lots next year. We've been, this is, it's, it's cold and it's wet and it's miserable and it's, it's going to be.
Mr. Bullis, with all due respect, I don't think you heard a word I just said. Has nothing to, to me, my, has nothing to do with that, that you come in at the last minute at a commission meeting and put in for a permit. We don't let other builders and developers do that. This is a precedent if we do this tonight. You didn't hear a word I, I was talking about?
Well, actually I did and that's why, your, with all due respect, what I'm saying is, but, you know, we, we were last minute on the agenda, we didn't think this was a commission issue. We've never been here asking for early permit, I mean, we've, we've never had this arise to a commission level. I don't know, I kind of feel like I'm on new ground here and perhaps I'm the one who was wrong. I mean, it's entirely possible that we're just way outside the, you know, the whole universe of the, of how to get a permit here. We've been looking for answers for a couple of weeks and it, all I'm saying is it's cold and wet, we get that, builders are going to have to live with that and we've, and we've done that for hundreds of homes. There so far, I apologize for being here, we didn't want to, for the commission asking for building permits this late in the year.
So you're saying, as of last Thursday, you didn't know you had to come in front of us?
We didn't think this was going to rise to a commission decision last week. Honestly, we thought this was, we were kind of waiting, why aren't we getting permits? And I, I think, I said, I'm sensing some reluctance out of staff to, to make a decision outside of any sort of, you know, the normal process, maybe because of just, I'm, I'm just sensing some reluctance in that regard and that's why we're here, just I think looking, say, hey, it's okay to give these guys, it's, it's okay to turn them loose. We, you know, we know the consequences if, you know, it's, it's going to cost the builders more money, they're going to have to heat some ground potentially. And we're going to have to pay winter charges to get electricity in, we're going to have to pay Cass County frost charges to go ahead and put power in to get power to these builders. It's, it's just, it's been a miserable construction season for everyone, our builders included. And that's why we're here. You know, last Thursday, if I thought we had to have, because this was going to come to the city's mission, I can assure you, we'd have been asking to be on the agenda. And I apologize that we were. And we've got, I do have Neil Thompson from Thompson Homes, he's, he's here with us. He's, if you guys want to hear from him, how this affects some of the builders as opposed to just us developers.
Any additions, an additional staff comment?
Okay, a question to Thursday. Dustin, do you know how, how far are they away from the point to where these guys could go in and get a permit and build as far as the contractor that's doing the infrastructure? And they're on, they're, they're on, are they not? On schedule?
Yes, Commissioner Thor said, the, the contractor was a little late, but the improvements are made. The, the street's in, and the only thing that really has to be done, if I recall, is the, the wire needs to get pulled through the conduit for the streetlights. But the improvements are made, this, this is different than the Hadley Meadows situation where we haven't made improvements out there. The improvements are for the most part done. There's still things like the boulevard seating, so on and so forth that need, that need to get finished up. But, so traditionally, we are at a stage where, weather aside, we're at a stage where permits would have been issued. Again, I, I think Jay's reluctance to issue permits out here in this situation was, again, the back to the, the stormwater management, you know, keeping the streets clean, getting a, a big mess kind of created out there, as well as the constructibility concerns, you know, the, the frost and some of the other stuff that he's, he's mentioned. So this isn't a situation where engineering has said, nope, our contractor's not done, you can't build. This is more of a, a, the, the weather, the, the conditions we're concerned with. Again, the, whether it's the stormwater management and/or the constructibility out here is, we're just concerned.
Biggest concern is it's going to mess the streets all up with mud and water standing or whatever it all creates. That's, if, if they had the wire pulled or whatever, they could go and get a building permit, regardless of the weather?
Yeah.
Us to whatever, that's their issue.
I'd say we've issued permits in developments that have had far less complete. You know, once the street's been done, we've allowed permits. We've even got a special form for allowing a permit once sewer and water's done and the gravel's on, so.
This time of year?
That's, well, but the factors at this point are abnormal weather. It, it's uncharacteristically wet out there. It is getting late, but, yeah, we, we've issued permits late fall before so that they can get a foundation in and cap it and so, and so forth. So I really think it's, it's the conditions have put an uncomfortable feeling of allowing further construction. We have other, as I alluded to when we started the construction updates discussion, we have a lot of construction going on, private residential and/or commercial, that it's difficult to stay up with the, the messes on the roads, you know, and, and we don't have the staff to be enforcing these, these requirements. So when we do have the general public affected by these things and they're calling in to complain, you know, why is Suket Street a mess? Why is Brooks Harbor 9th a complete mess? Why am I taking my kid to school near a road that's got complete, full of mud? The DOT calling and saying, the new development project by the fire station is continually bringing mud out onto the street, we cannot get a profile graph test done. So we're continuing to deal with a high volume of complaints and issues and we don't have the staff in place to really go out and enforce our stormwater management. So that is a big driving factor. But again, Jay brings up the other factors of constructibility, the, the frost and so on and so forth. So, but again, different than high, Hadley Meadows, in this case, the infrastructure is in place and that is not the hang-up here. Whereas with High, Hadley Meadows, we were certainly concerned that a foundation would be in before our utilities.
Just to clarify, if we, if this was a normal fall, this would have been, already been issued?
Yes, absolutely. Whereas in the case of Hadley Meadows, regardless of weather, that would have come here because to authorize a building permit ahead of underground utilities being put in, not something that we would authorize without commission approval, so.
One question, thank you.
Tina does bring up a good point. If we had a wet spring, would we hold up building permits?
No.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, a question for Jay would be, is the concern with the building permits or on constructibility, the fact that it cannot be constructed in wet conditions or just concerns that it won't be constructed correctly? If I said that correctly?
For us, the concern is, in what we've had over the last four winters, when they do start constructing, we've had some catastrophic failures. Biggest ones, if they don't supply heat or if it goes out and a sump pump is running. We've had four to five inches of ice in a basement and it's heaved over four inches and busted numerous floor trusses or at least the bottom members. And if that's not the case, we've had an entire basement floor have to be removed because of, uh, floor level split. That was just two years ago. And it's the stuff that we end up running into, that as soon as we run into that, we'll stop inspections and they got to get a structural engineer. It's just, the likelihood of this happening for this year, we've got such wet ground, it's going to be like an ice cube. And then you can't backfill around it, it's possible to bring it in, but if you throw any type of clumped material or anything against that concrete, and we have had concrete walls freeze so they stay green for four months and so they haven't had a chance to cure on the inside. Those are our concerns because that's what we get to see and it is not going to be a good product by the time it's done.
Thank you, Mr. Sandvik. Do you gentlemen care to address those concerns?
Yeah, thank you Commissioners and Mr. President and staff for letting us join a little late to the agenda. I'm Neil Thompson, president at Thompson Homes. Totally understand all of the concerns around the constructibility. Obviously, we want to put out a good product, that's who we are, that's what we want to do. So the last thing we would want to do is put something in that we feel is in jeopardy of that. I do feel though, that if you look at other developments right now, I believe they are releasing permits in West Fargo, I don't know that for sure, but that's somewhat of a question to Jay. I know we're still getting permits in other cities around the Fargo-Moorhead area and so we are still able to put foundations in the ground. And, you know, we do make decisions very early based upon business model and where we may be putting some of our products. We have three homes that are planned to be on the Spring Parade of Homes in this development to help push the lots that we own and also then the lots that these guys own as the developers. So those decisions aren't made weeks or two weeks prior to this, they're made months in advance. We actually have calendar appointments on, in place, months in advance so we can do all the selections and designs so that our construction team can just get the ground running. So if we don't get permits in this development, we don't have the lots that we need to be able to put the Spring Parade models anywhere else in West Fargo and they'll be moving over to Fargo to our development buys and metals that we've got there. So we would much prefer to put them here because we would like to try to start selling the lots that we have in Wilds 11th. And by missing that parade, we know that we are going to get a slower traction on those lots that we own in that development. So if there's any questions on the actual construction, construction and the ability to be able to put out a good product, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions that you have on that too.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons.
John, I have a question, I guess, for you. Because of the way that this came to the commission tonight at the last minute without being on the agenda and at the very last with no public notice or anything, are we setting a precedent? Have we ever approved something like this before or voted? I don't recall and it, it just scares me that, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to him doing it, but I'm opposed adamantly to doing it at the last minute like this, at this meeting. But I, if, if, if you feel we, you know, this is not a precedent, that's, that's maybe different, but.
Well, we ha, the city of West Fargo has approved proceeding at your own risk with the building permit. Typically, that has occurred in unique situations in which we're just waiting for infrastructure to be, look, or to be extended to the house or the building. I think in this case, the concern from staff is the, the wet fall and what an impact that could have on the construction industry. And so it's, I, I don't know if you're setting a precedent, you've already, the city's already approved previously build at your own risk, building permits. I think this is really unusual in that we have so many different building permits at issue because of the ground conditions. Dustin, did you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, but is the, Commissioner Simmons, is your concern the fact that we may be taking action on a non-agenda item at the last minute?
I guess, yeah, I'm not concerned about the at-risk because I know we've done that. I'm concerned about the action we're taking that was not on the agenda, it's not been published. It's a last minute, I, I don't want us to get to a position where all of a sudden, all the, you know, exaggerating obviously, but all of a sudden, a lot of developers and, and builders just think they can come in at the last minute and put them on the agenda. Very strict about, and I think, I believe the mayor has too, as far as doing an agenda and getting it in on time. And I'm not going to speak for him, but I mean, I'm just saying, that's the protocol, that's the way we've always done it. I don't recall one coming this very late in, in the stage. And that's what concerns me, Dustin and John.
Yeah, that, that, thank you for clarifying that. I'm, I don't recall something like this coming to the agenda at the last minute under new business. Typically, it has been presented to the commission as part of the packet and a request. And you certainly, it, it's up to the commission, it would probably be a little different. It might set a precedent in that people will start coming at the last minute to get on the agenda. That's a commission decision, it's not a legal precedent because legally you can not have something on the agenda, so. But it certainly, in my recollection, I don't remember something at the last minute like this getting on the agenda.
Thank you.
The fact that we have a line item for non-agenda items, if, if we're worried about a legal precedence or protection, that, that helps us in, in that environment right there. The other thing is, is that these gentlemen were not made aware in previous weeks of conversation that this required a commission approval. So that discussion must have taken place Thursday or Monday or, or Friday. They're all nodding, I so, you know, I don't know when that took place. So out of respect to a quality builder in our community, another gentleman that's been involved in all types of things, if, if, if anybody's got a problem with this, it's on me. But I'm going to respect the people that are investing in our community each and every day. So if the commission disagrees with me, I'll have the opportunity to vote against it. But the fact of the matter is, we have a non-agenda item as a line item. This was non-agenda because these good folks were unaware that there needed to be a permit. This was non-agenda because these good folks were unaware that there needed to be a permit, and that's, that's no reflection on, on any of our staff or anything like that. It's a communication issue. Well, that's why I honored their request this evening. So again, if you don't like what, what I've done, vote against it, or vote however you please. This is Fisk.
I'm not sure how this affects any decision or discussion, but if you wanna review your building department activity report for this month, up to the 21st, you will be able to see what type of permits have been allowed to start. Not that that makes any difference at all, I just wanna make it be very clear so that you have all your facts.
I do have a question for Mr. Sandberg. There are, Charles, at least three permits on here for residential dwellings, so what makes those different than, than these?
When there was still work that wasn't finished a while ago, there was punch list ups, whatever, there was no permits to be issued, and that, we had talked at length on that, so yeah, that was fine. And it just got down to the point where we're getting later and later and later. We do have them allowed other places, this is just a new development, but just a portion of it, and it's just my opinion on that, but it's what we also have to deal with on this, at the city level. Because it just is not a good time to be building there, it isn't anywhere. I wish I could say, yeah, as soon as we get 20 degrees, it's over, but that's never gonna happen. So I mean, if they, if you choose to have them built, we'll work with them like we do with all the builders, on it, and deal with it as we go.
Like, like Mrs. Fisk said, most of these are for remodels, um, accessories, like a deck or something like that, rather than the whole, I only found at least three residential dwellings on the permit, so that's why I was just wondering, why did we feel comfortable with those, and we're not gonna feel comfortable with, with the ones that are in the wilds?
I would have you take a look at the report also, there's two just for foundations.
Mr. President? If I could just, I just wanted to add into that observation here, there's a couple of developments where they come in and they take, you know, a whole row of, of streets, and they make a, a major mess. I mean, we, we think about words that we use, war, war zone, chaos, things like that. Our building inspections department needs to be within that war zone doing inspections. So I just wanna make recognition that it's a difficult task that they do. So you think about the contractors who have to be working in this, our employees also have to be working in this, doing the inspection. So I wanna make sure that we back up Jay in a little bit, in that they have to be in there doing the inspections. So if I could just add, if, if it is approved tonight, making sure that the contractor and the developer know that they need to be a partner in this, in helping keep that neighborhood clean. So, and developer has a big role in that, the builder has a big role in it, and a lot of people point fingers, so I wanna make sure that we're recognizing that as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Review, reviewing, you talking three houses? You're not talking like three houses, are you?
Yeah, thank you. Um, we've got three model homes that we've got permits submitted for, and we've got two pre-sales that will be closing early this year. So apparently, we have a total of five in our area, and we've got kind of a cul-de-sac area, where we own our lots, and then there's another section where some other builders...
Five total is what you had anticipated?
Five total is what we have currently. My salesperson told me he was working on one other one that he knows about, so depending on when we get that contract, maybe another one or two, but no, we aren't gonna be going in and putting in 15, 20 foundations at this time.
Just for review, Dustin, you said there's nothing as far as issuing a building permit in this area that would hold it back, other than our concern that the quality of the construction may not be where we'd like it, or there may be materials drag on the road or whatever, something to that effect, and where, as you explained, that we don't have enough staff to make sure that all the steps are being followed properly along the way?
Correct, yep. So again, the infrastructure for this development, or at least this section of the development is in place.
Mr. Sandberg?
With those three permits that are, have been issued, that is already a pre-developed area, too, where it's, the chances of, are better for not being so dirty, and we got builders in there now, if they get in. Also, with the three homes that Thompson's may, may have, I've got four or five builders that are inquiring, or have had permits come to me a few weeks ago that we had to turn away. Now I was dealing with punch list stuff, so it's not just three. I can't imagine, I guess about 10, at least, going in there for that.
And you turned them folks down?
Those were two weeks, at least two weeks or better before, because we had some other stuff going on in the wilds that they wanted to start building two or three weeks ago. One was even a month ago, and it wasn't ready, so we had to hold it. And then punch list stuffs came up, and then the rain, and talking within the staff, we thought it was best not to, or bring it forward here. Unfortunately, the communication didn't lend itself to that.
Thank you, Mr. Sandberg.
Forgot clarification.
Commissioners? Any additional questions? Of the developer, the builder, our staff?
Mayor, have we gotten, I guess, I just have one question, have we gotten a consensus of what the staff is recommending here? Do we have any, or are you just throwing it out to us? Do you, do we actually have a, a recommendation from the staff? To me, it's clear, you're all coming up and speaking, but nobody, I don't know if you, legally, you can't give us a recommendation, or you just perhaps don't want to, but...
I can tell you that when Jay, Tim and I met on Tuesday, I was, again, clear that our infrastructure's in place, and this is really setting a new precedent in terms of holding on permits, but I would certainly support it from the aspect of avoiding another war zone, if you will, because this, the complaints that come out of that come to my office, and again, I don't have the staff to even handle the complaints.
From adjoining neighbors?
From the adjoining neighbors, and/or, again, it could be other entities, it could be the county. Complaints have been certainly increased this, this fall. So from that aspect, I, I, again, I don't think we necessarily can't issue a permit here, I just caution that it'll be nearly impossible for them to control their sites if they've got 10, 20 houses that start digging. That's a lot of work in a small area, and it will get dirty, and our process at this point is technically to inform our stormwater permit manager, which is Chad Xander, and then if, if he issues a violation, and 24 hours later, they haven't cleaned it up, the next recourse is to contact the police department, who has a designated officer to come out and issue a ticket. But again, the, the volume of violations are so large that we can't even begin to start issuing tickets. So again, I, in years, this would be the first time we denied a permit with the infrastructure being as far along as it is. I can say it that way. This would be the first time we don't issue permits with the infrastructure as far along it is, it is. The concern is, again, the abnormal weather conditions.
So to answer your question, they denied it last Tuesday, so that's...
So that, okay, so the, the news we just got though from Jay, if I'm correct, I heard him say that in the last two weeks, we haven't given them, given out permits.
This has been, as Jay mentioned, this has been going on for about a month, and a month ago, when the first...
Just so we haven't given them out, is my point, right? Some we haven't given out. So what are the ramifications if we approve this tonight from those people? That, that we said no to because it's too wet, now we got another group coming saying they, I, it just needs to be fair to everybody here, and it needs, and, and again, you already know my biggest, I mean, they come back in two weeks, I, honestly, I may support it, but my biggest deal is a protocol issue, you know, not against you, Mayor, not against you that you brought it forward, it's just that I worry about the precedent we set for other groups. Now, having said all that, I'm, now I'm also worried about if we do approve it, that we could have other builders and developers coming back against us. We denied it, we denied it to them.
So my understanding is, again, the first wave of the permit requests came about a month ago, and at that point, our project wasn't quite to a point where we were comfortable issuing permits, the street wasn't quite done, so on and so forth, there was still significant stuff to do. Although, two weeks ago, the, the improvements were done. However, we were already, that was right on the heels of the, the blizzard, and even before the blizzard, the conditions were wet, so again, there was a discomfort, and as Jay was fielding phone calls and requests, hey, you know, are we, can we get building permits if we send in applications? The answer was no. And another week goes by, which is last week now, it's, the question continues, can we get it in? And, and my understanding is Jay, Tim and, and Jerry, an engineer in my office, they got together, had a discussion. Later that afternoon, I joined the discussion, and, and at that point, it was kinda like Hadley Meadows and a couple other issues. Ultimately, we're just uncomfortable with the weather conditions to start authorizing permits. So I don't know that there's anybody that was turned away that can't either be called and notified that, okay, we are releasing permits, or can't send in a permit if you guys are comfortable moving forward. And again, at this point, if, if we don't authorize permits in this area, it would be the first time with the infrastructure this far along. And it's also a pretty abnormal fall in terms of weather.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Silver, you looked like you wanted to make a comment, if you have something for us? All right, sir.
Yeah, I guess I just have a question for Jay as far as permits that got turned away, because I just verified, we turned in our permits roughly around September 5th, September 9th, I just pulled it up to check, and we, we didn't get turned away, they've just been pending. So have the others just been pending, or did they actually get turned away, or sent back? Okay, sounds good. Um, yeah, I guess, I don't know how to handle that part of it then, but we've been expecting that this was gonna be completed, given the fact that we had submitted our permits and they've been pending, and we had communication with the city and with the developers, saying that, I mean, the streets were paved about over a month ago now, I believe, roughly, it was around September 10th. And, um, so since we submitted the permits, they weren't denied, they were just pending, we've been in constant communication, they've never been held up before, we're assuming we're gonna be able to get in, so.
Would you restate when you submitted the permit?
Yep.
You looked that way, and I didn't hear the date.
Sorry. Uh, we submitted some of them around September 5th, and one of them on September 9th, and that's at least when our person in our office filled it out on our form, it may not have been delivered until the next day, but that's when we filled up.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
If you decide not to make a motion or anything like that, then this discussion is over because it's a non-agenda item, and it was brought forward, so if there's an order, you know, either a motion to deny, motion to approve, or it can die for the lack of thereof, so. Commissioner Simmons?
So Mayor, if it, if it denies for a lack of thereof, then can they still come back?
Certainly.
I mean, because isn't there something, John, where if you, if you deny something, you can't bring it back anymore? I don't know that it pertains to this, but...
Well, I suppose they, they, they could come back with a different request in two weeks.
And put it on the agenda, or the regular agenda, come through that way.
And, I mean, this is really, this is a commission decision, you can, you can approve it, you can wait for more information, it's, this is truly a commission decision, there was a question about legally, can you do it? Yeah, you can approve it, you cannot approve it, this is a discretionary act of the commission, so.
Commissioners, one question I would have on your action would be, are we considering only the permits that they've submitted, the three to five permits that have been submitted here, or are we taking action on the entire portion of the wilds that is, for the most part, has complete infrastructure?
Well, that's a question I would have, is, is this a matter of policy, or is this something that's new? Because this isn't the first wet spring we've had ever in, in the history of West Fargo. I mean, we've had plenty of other ones that are as bad or worse. I, I, I understand your guys' concern, that's a legitimate concern, you get a poor builder that doesn't do things right, and you're gonna have the messes, and you're gonna have bad foundations, and you're gonna have heaving floors and all that stuff that Jay described, because I'm, I'm sure he's run into that from bad, well, and should we pick and choose? But I guess, to me, I think it's gotta be a matter of policy, if that's what we establish, that should be our criteria going forward, so everybody knows that because of the residual problems we have dealing with the soil conditions, that we therefore just aren't gonna issue permits at a certain time. So that's where I struggle, I, I, I don't know these guys personally, but I think they are, they're good developers and good builders, and I think they probably do it right, but, you know, on the other hand, we allow them to do it, then maybe the bad guy should get his too as well, I don't know. I don't know the answer, I'm really torn between the two. I, I, I respect what you guys are saying and, and your perspective, but on the other hand, if done right, and we're not doing dirty homes, you know, maybe it'll work. It sounds like the thing we have to solve here is, we have to come up with some kind of a, either staff or someone to, to get those inspection, additional inspection steps in there. If we're having a problem with, it's just going, oh, the heck, well then, that's our fault, because we're either understaffed, or we don't have the right protocols to make sure that doesn't happen. And we should be holding the developers, builders accountable for the messes they're creating.
Absolutely, nope. And the discussion that we had, you know, asked the question, you know, it's gonna be wet in the spring, it's gonna be wet in the fall, when is, if, if we deny it now, when do we allow it? And Jay's other concern was, again, just the cold weather application for constructability, so. But yeah, you're 100% right, it's gonna be wet nine months out of the year, and we don't have the staff in place to really enforce our stormwater management. So that is an overall policy decision or discussion for the future.
Commissioner Trudwick?
Do we know what our neighboring communities are doing right now? Are they issuing, issuing building permits? Are they, do they have the same concern?
I'll defer that, I, I'm generally not involved with residential permitting, so I, I don't know.
As far as Moorhead and Fargo, I can't say exactly how they do it. Moorhead will shut off concrete at a certain point, and it's done, so does Fargo at certain instances, instances, but it's relatively up to that community, how that happens.
And I would admit prevailing weather conditions is, you know, sometimes we have a long fall, sometimes short, you know?
Yes.
Okay, the gentlemen, the developers here and the builder, you all indicated that you're still pulling permits in the other communities, that's what I got with the head nod there, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're still, I mean, we have, we've developed Madelins Meadows in the Y, and Golden Valley in Fargo, and they're, they're both issuing permits up until last week, I know Don Dabbert just pulled another one in Madelins Meadows. And, you know, to, to a couple of these things, you know, I, I feel like we're asking for something special, you know, sort of, it's, it's kinda what the conversation's about. Historically, over all the years, this has been kinda the norm, when we get the curb down, asphalt down, that we've been able to expect permits, and it's, maybe we were just fortunate to, to, to have, have had that happen. We're at a point where the infrastructure seems like it's ready to roll. We all know there's, there's challenges, and the builders are gonna have to, you know, bear that risk, you know? If the city wants us to sweep the streets more, whatever it takes to, to get these things rolling, we'll do it. You know, we just have to hopefully be able to keep the city on, the city on the grow.
Thank you, Mr. Bullis. Commissioners, thoughts, please?
Sorry, the last thing I'll say is, we haven't had any permits turned down in any of the other cities that we're building in yet this year. We're still pulling permits actively, Grand Forks, Fargo, Moorhead, Horus, and we've been getting permits from everybody, as long as the infrastructure is in place.
Thank you, sir. Are they in similar states of development like Beagle's Wild, or the Wild?
Yep.
So there are basically no construction whatsoever, other than you being the first ones in there?
Um, so we've got, our development in Bison Meadows, we've got roughly 40 to 50 lots that have not been constructed on. Now, there's already construction in there from ourselves, but some of the areas that we're going into, we haven't started on any of those lots. Same in Grand Forks, we're the only builder in some of those areas, but there's a lot of lots that have not been constructed yet. Horus, there's a newer development, um, sorry, I'm forgetting the name right now, but there's a new development that just opened recently in the last month and a half or so.
So basically, in the same status, there's virtually nothing else out there, other than a couple of spec homes going up right now?
Um, the Bison Meadows example I gave, I mean, we've got multiple phases, so there are a lot of homes that are built, but just like in the wilds, we just had a new phase open up, Phase 3, so, yes, roughly the same, but maybe not exactly with the quantity of lots, but other areas... lots, but other areas that is new construction with other vacant lots around it, yes.
You know where I stand already, so...
Well, then let's answer a question here, let's, again, us still stand by bringing this item forward, due to the nature of the folks that are involved, and out of respect for our staff, we needed to answer the question for our staff this evening. So, anybody's got to know how to join about me, bring it on, because I still think we did the right thing by being transparent and having a conversation about it. And certainly with the timeliness, it's not going to get any better, we wait for another two weeks, so, let's address it head-on. Motion one way or another, please, if you...
The question is, do you want a motion, or do you want an opinion?
I'll take both of you, Mike. I'd value both from you.
My opinion is, I would give them the building permit. I understand and I respect all the comments from our staff, but I think we have to develop an inspection protocol, and also, whatever standards we opt to do as a city, so it's not all of a sudden, boy, we've had lots of problems, it's wet out there, we're going to have a lot of problems, because that's not necessarily the case. These guys understand, or should understand, going into winter or wet conditions, it's going to require different building procedures and stuff to do it right. I would hope, I wouldn't put out a parade of homes, home that's got the floor heaving, or the foundation cracking, or whatever either, so I trust that these are going to be right, but I think we have to, as a city, we have to look at the program. And if we want that policy that after a certain point, or if there's a certain amount of moisture that we really just don't want to do it because of the headaches, I think that's fine, but I don't think, this year's unusual, but it's not that unusual from what we've been through in the past, and in recent years. We're in a history of wet conditions, and again, Jay's examples are spot-on, we got some bad builders out there, and we do need staffing to be able to stay on top, it doesn't get out of hand. So I'm going to give you my opinion, is I would allow for the building permits, but then request that staff look at the program overall.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Mrs. Fisk, please.
Thank you. If I could say one thing, let's keep in mind too, that whatever your decision is, if they do go forward, those developers or builders or whomever that are in violation of our stormwater, they become in violation of the ordinance as being in good standing with the city, and therefore, no longer have any permits, or any ability to get an additional permit, until they rectify that with the city commission.
Okay, and these particular builders don't have that situation now, they're not, are they...
Not now.
But they should be aware of that. That's my two cents. If you want in the motion, I would say, I'd make the motion to allow permits to continue, but again, let's look at our program and how we're regulating the activities out there.
We have a motion to approve the permits, with some conditions. Yeah, I think you understand that with regarding to the stormwater, with regard to the condition of the street. Is there a second?
Yeah, I would second that, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, I totally have a lot of confidence in Mr. Sandvik's, you know, opinion and his knowledge around this, but I also agree that, with the motion that's made.
And moved and seconded, Commissioner Trudovic second, to approve permits for Thompson Homes. I'm going to make a comment, this evening when I was driving into the city commission meeting, the large construction project that's on 32nd and Cheyenne, there's an example of a contractor being cognizant of the issues and concerns. They not only had one sweeper there, they had two sweepers there. They had two bobcats that were working the street also, between our Ice Venue and that construction site. They were being extremely diligent in policing the conditions out there, because it's a damn mess, there's no doubt about that. So as I would, you know, these conditions, if Mr. Sandvik is correct, we have to have access to this site, it has to be a safe environment for them to get in there to do their inspections. If there's any issues that Mr. Sandvik brings forward, gentlemen, I'm going to tell you right now that we're going to support that staff recommendation to the 10th degree, so as long as you understand all of the issues that are being discussed here. So is there any other additional discussion that you'd like this evening, commissioners? Again, the motion is to approve. Hearing that, and we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Division of the House is called for by the chairman. Again, all those in favor, please signify by saying, by raising your right hand, my apologies.
What? I'm sorry, explain that, Division of the House.
Yeah, yeah, Division of the House means we're going to have a roll call vote.
Oh, that's easier.
I'm sorry, I'm an old FFA guy. So...
John's laughing at me.
Shut up, I'm a parliamentary procedure nerd, John. All those in favor, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Thorsted?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Oh.
Mr. Simmons?
Who?
Mr. Trudovic?
Yes.
Dartis?
Yes.
Is there any additional non-agenda items that you'd like to bring up this evening? Sorry. The motion passes.
Thank you, Courtney.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Do I have a motion, please?
No, you don't, I'd prefer somebody else to start doing that.
Second.
All right, I read it. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn.